Jim's report is presented. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving along. Next on the agenda is the tax collector's report. Suzanne?
Hey, mine is short and sweet. For the month of November, I've only collected one hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents in annual taxes and twenty dollars and sixty-one cents in interim taxes for two thousand seventeen. I did want to let you know that all final notices have been sent out for school, county, township, school, county, and township taxes for the year, so we're wrapping up again.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Suzanne?
Uh, no.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made. Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the engineer's report.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few small items. If you recall, the WoodSpring Meadows subdivision, the Garrises Townhouse Development, we had held back five thousand dollars in the spring for a few landscape items that we had to complete because it was early, it was early spring and it couldn't do it. Yes, since completed those items, we have a letter in your packet recommending that we, uh, you make a motion to find a project complete and releases remaining escrow funds.
Any questions regarding that matter from the board? Okay, motion's been made by Don.
Second.
Second, by Jim. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You have that.
Okay, we have your, you have your plan review status in the packet. There's no projects to be reacted to tonight. And lastly, you also have three escrow release authorizations, two for Rock Hill Contractor Services. Was it one in amount of five thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and change and the other in the amount of four thousand seven thirty-one and change? And then also A and T Subaru has an escrow release request, um, amount of fifty-one thousand twenty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Has everything been satisfied down there for A and T Subaru? That was the place on the hill on the right?
Right. They have some minor punchless items outstanding. We still have, even with this release, there'll still be sixty-two thousand dollars in escrow.
Would it be fair to do the release or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they, it's very minor right issues if they have one.
Did you find out what they're gonna do with that and bank money yet?
They replanted it. We're seeing that there.
Well, must've just done it the last couple of days.
Well, they, they overseeded it.
So they're putting any grass?
Yeah. They're, they're trying to get it, Mr. Allen would like to be able to maintain it better than it ever was maintained, so he's trying to get it, some low ground cover growth that he could, not low like lawn, but, but keep it cut back.
Okay. Alright, so you need a motion for those voucher releases, right?
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made by Jim. I'll second it. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice habit. Thanks.
That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Steve, I have a question for ya. I think in the meeting last month, people may have been left with the impression that the Moore Property Project was dead. At least that's the way I came away with it. I didn't want anybody to feel that that was the case. It's my impression that we successfully completed Phase One. We're getting ready, we'll move into Phase Two once we get another large contractor with a lot of dirt and fill that, tends to come in and fill it in, right?
We have an active erosion control permit, actually an NPDS permit, for the first three fields. Which was, included the large field on top.
Yeah.
A smaller field, if you go to the west.
Yeah.
And then an even smaller field.
All the way.
Be behind the, uh, school.
School.
So those three upper fields, we have a permit for.
Okay.
That's good for another two or three years that I, could actually be renewed. So at any point, as you said, if we, if we got a donation or a contractor that wanted to work with us, we could still do those upper, upper fields under the permits we already have.
Because I know we've had interest from Little League and I was thinking about other leagues around that may want to still use that. And we've, we've, we have talked in the past about using the building for a sports complex, uh, headquarters or, uh, the historical society using it.
And we, we don't have a full plan for complete parking areas and
Right, yeah.
actual, you know, backstops and improvements on the park. There's a sketch plan out there.
Yeah.
Uh, but the permit we have is just to, to grade other field areas.
Right, okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Alright, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the engineer's report. Motion's been made?
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next on the agenda is the solicitor's report. Mary, how are you?
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Um, the first item, I think that's the first item on, it's the first thing in my pile, is the Fedegary Development Agreements. Do you remember this is on, um, Bethlehem Pike?
Yep.
And, um, they've, they've signed all their development agreements, so I have for you, um, a request for authorization to sign the reserve parking agreement, the memorandum of development agreement, the development agreement, the holding tank agreement, and the stormwater management agreement. The, um, holding tank agreement and the reserve parking agreement were special things required as part of the approval. The other three documents are documents you do for every subdivision and land development.
Okay. Alright, any questions for that or concerns regarding that matter?
I'm good. I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion made.
Second.
Second by Don. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's a big pile, so I'm gonna pass them down so you can get, oh, they're all for Jay.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, the next item on the solicitor's report is, um, the, a resolution that, um, Mr. Klimer alluded to in the beginning of the meeting regarding opting out of the mini casino, um, hosting job. The, what, I think Mr. Mr. Klimer provided as much information as you could possibly provide. The only one thing that I would add to this is that although you cannot have a mini casino within twenty-five miles of an existing casino, and we are within twenty-five miles of parks but not of, of, I mean, of sands but not of parks, who are further than twenty-five miles from parks, there's an exception to that, and if, if you own the casino, that's within twenty-five miles, that casino could put a mini casino within twenty-five miles. So, um, staff is recommending, uh, this resolution which would be Resolution Number Twenty dash Seventeen. And in essence, it reads, "The Board of Supervisors of West Rock Hill Township adopts this resolution in accordance with," and then it cites the section number, "to prohibit the place and operation of a category four licensed facility within the boundaries of West Rock Hill Township." So it's up to you what you're gonna do with that.
So moved.
Well, we have, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice habit. Thank you.
Alright, now I'll pass that down. And I have one more item that is not on the, um, that's not on the solicitor's report because I, I just thought of it today, but we're going to settlement soon and hopefully it'll be the week after Thanksgiving with Sellersville to buy the catch basin roof property. And we need to, for the title company, we'll need a resolution authorizing, um, Jay and Greg to sign any necessary documents.
So you need us to authorize you to do that?
No, I need you to authorize Resolution Two Thousand Seventeen
Okay.
So moved.
Dash eighteen, authorizing, um, the chairman of the board, the township manager, Anne Schleser, the township solicitor, to attend settlement and execute any documents necessary to complete the purchase of the properties.
Okay, we have a motion put on the floor by Don.
Second.
Second by Jim. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice habit.
Yeah, this came up in Sellersville being Monday night, so they've got it on their mind too.
Yeah, um, and then I've been talking with their solicitor
Okay.
um, this week probably four times, so we're, we're working toward it. And then, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to read.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion for approval of the solicitor's report as presented. Motion's been made. I'll second it. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice habit. Thank you. Hang on, Jim, we got more yet.
I, I, we can start on this.
Alright, the next on the agenda here moving along is the township manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the emergency services report. Uh, I'll go over the emergency services report for October two thousand seventeen. Sellersville had twenty-eight calls, twelve of which were in West Rock Hill Township. Sellersville Route three oh nine, seven calls, six of which were in West Rock Hill Township. Telford had thirty-three calls, five of which were in West Rock Hill Township. Telford three oh nine had three calls, three of which were in West Rock Hill Township. Tyler's Port had twenty-seven calls, two of which were in West Rock Hill Township. And Trump Barswell had forty-eight calls, five of which were in West Rock Hill Township. Any questions?
I have none.
The next item is the building and zoning report. For the month of October two thousand seventeen, we brought in six thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents, bringing the grand total to sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty cents. Any questions?
I have none.
No.
Uh, you also have a list of the permits that we issued.
Any questions on that?
Alright, the next item is the treasurers' report, uh, ending October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. The general fund, four hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Highway eight, one hundred and eighteen dollars, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. The open space fund, one million seven hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Park fund, eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. The equipment fund, eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty cents. Highway capital, a hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Streetlight, thirty-three thousand eighty-three fifty-nine. And the reserve funds, the general fund reserve, three hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. The open space manure field, fifty thousand six hundred and fifty-four and eighty-eight cents. Sewage maintenance, one hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. Stormwater fund, five thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. The escrow funds, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Also, the open space durstine, twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. We also have a copy of the list of bills.
Any questions for Greg regarding the bills and the, the list?
I have a motion for approval.
Don's?
All subject of it.
Yep, okay, we have a motion put on the floor.
Aye, second.
Approval, okay, second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Alright, Public Works Report. I'll go over the maintenance performed on township roads. Armoe Forest and Lawn, Green Top and Thousand Acre, Patch Meeting House, Klimer, Potlawn Forest, blew out ditches on Thousand Acre, upper and lower Rockydale, Twin Lows, Butter Creek, Shoe Craft, Gold Line, North Tower, in the intersections of Ridge Hill and Route three oh nine, Camp Rock Hill Road and Allentown Road. Uh, they helped pave with East Rock Hill Township. Uh, they key cut shitty lane for overlay and, uh, crack sealed. Crack sealed catch basin, ditch work on Quarry Road and Meeting House. Cleaned the downed tree on Mountain View Road, Hayfler Road and Forest Road. Replaced two signs of Bart and Simmons, a sign on Long Avenue, replaced the stop sign in Jesmont and Lonely. Repaced the speed limit sign on Wellington Way and Thousand Acre Road, replaced the sign on Long Avenue. That was knocked down, cleaned out the storm box from Old Mill and Butler Pike. Checked the roadways for limbs debris from the rain and windstorm and cleaned, cleaned intersections from the tar and shit.
Okay, I have one concern on a roadway that I've noticed that that dead tree is still in, uh, Ridge Valley Road, Pendott issue. Go past Tower Road, past Tower Road on the right-hand side, and you'll see that dead tree standing in the, um, ditch. I've got a good feeling it's gonna fall down.
Oh, it's standing?
It's standing.
They got the one that, that was falling down?
Yeah, it's not falling down. This is standing dead. Okay, right-hand side, going that way.
I'll turn that, man.
Thank you. Any other questions for Greg on the Republic Works?
Yeah, Greg, did you get in contact with Pendott again about those tires on three oh nine ramp, Northbound ramp?
Not since the day you and I talked two days ago. Two days ago, I sent him an email. I haven't heard back from him. I can email them again.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh, the next item is, well, we did that.
We took care of that, yep.
Took care of that. The next item is the Board of Supervisors met with the fire panel, um, and they discussed a Knox box ordinance. Um, you have a copy of Sellersville's ordinance. What a Knox box does is, and for any new business, they put a box by the door. And if I, if I'm misspeaking, you can, you can help me back there. And what happens is if there's an emergency, the police have a key, the, the fire companies have a key, separate keys, and they know who goes into the Knox box. And if there's an emergency for some fire inside the business, they can go in and unlock the Knox box. The key to the business will be in there, and then they can unlock the door. If an alarm's going off or there's something going off, then the fire company doesn't have to break a window, doesn't have to break a door, and will be able to get in. It's all controlled, um, with data. They know who goes into the Knox box, and only certain officers in the fire department and the police department have keys.
This, this can also be very helpful to someone who has, someone who's informed at home or something, and they work all day. And if the police need to get in there, or the fire department needs to get in that house, and that person can't get out, this can be very helpful to those people also. So Jerry, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that, but I think.
Greg, am I correct? This ordinance, uh, currently only applies to commercial businesses?
Well, it can, it, what you have before you is Sellersville's. What I would be looking for tonight is authorization for Mary to draft
Drafting, yeah.
for, for how the board sees it, whether you see it for all new businesses or if you see it for all new existing businesses. That would be up to the determination of the board.
Does Sellersville have it mandatory for commercial businesses?
I thought it was.
They have it mandatory for new businesses.
I think it's mandatory for new businesses. I don't, but let me look.
Why would be only new?
Commercial describes Shelby's employment six months.
But I'll tell you, for a cost of a couple hundred bucks, which is all it is, you put this on your business and you can kind of rest easy at night knowing if there's something happens in your building, the fire department and the police department can get in there. I mean, to me, it, to me, it's a no brainer.
Well, you, we discussed that if you, if they have to break a door down, it's, you know, you're looking at a lot more than a couple hundred bucks to replace that door.
It's all businesses that have an automated fire alarm system.
Yes.
All new businesses, all businesses that expand and all existing businesses that have
An automated fire alarm system.
Okay. What are you looking at?
My cost required, page two.
Page two at the bottom. One, all new commercial buildings. Two, all existing commercial buildings undergoing the construction and improvements that require land development. All existing commercial buildings equipped with an automated fire service. That's not, that's not the same thing.
That's what he said. That's what he said.
I would like to make a motion to redirect.
I am glad we take these because there will be a discussion about this tomorrow.
I got all the faces he made.
Mrs. Strobel, you have a question?
Yes, Karen Strobel, we have a question. Um, we have a push button to enter into our house. Should we notify the police of those numbers just in case?
That's only if you want to participate. You're a private resident. You don't really have to. It's up to you. You can, if you want to.
You could even put your code, you could even put your code in the box. It's just a box that you put your key in.
Oh, okay.
So you can put your code in there and just say, punch this in.
It's not like we would call the police and give them the numbers and
No.
they're keeping up with that.
Nope.
They have, they have a locked box, they have a locked box in their vehicle that's bolted down, and in that box is the key to the ma, it's the master key for all the knock boxes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, every person, there's usually three, about three in the fire department, I think, and three in the police department that have access. They all have their own codes. They know, they know exactly who's opening the box.
So it's only for, you have to purchase the box?
You have to purchase the box. I think there were a couple hun, a couple hundred dollars, three hundred maybe.
So what's a window?
Versus a window, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, that's, that's what it stands. Any other questions?
Okay, so, um, I would like to put a motion on the floor to, to authorize Mary to prepare a, a draft.
Yeah, I'd, I'd second that.
You'd second that? Okay. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Yeah.
Okay, nice habit.
Hopefully a good idea for private homes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it is too, Don. I think there's, there's situations where, I mean, everybody doesn't want to quote, let the government in, but, you know, it's, it's, there's situations where I think there are residents who have a need to have somebody come in their house.
These are your neighbors.
And they're your neighbors, yeah, yeah.
Carol, I would suggest, you know, if you feel that way, contact police, give them, give Rod the information, and that way, if something happens, they know they can get in your house. They know a way to get in your house.
I believe you can buy them now. It's just now we want to put an ordinance in saying that. Tony?
Tony?
Yeah, I just have a quick question about the ordinance. Did I hear correctly that it's, um, only if it has an automated, um, fire alarm system? Is that correct?
That's what the manager said.
That's what the manager said.
Oh, boy.
He said number four. In number four.
But there's one, two, three in front of that.
Right.
Can I ask you, do you have a concern one way or another, Don?
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I mean, I, I work where I live at, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
And I, 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 me personally, I know that it's good, but I'm not comfortable with it myself.
You don't feel you need it yourself?
Well, I, I don't, and, and all, you're like telling everyone, here's the key to my house in this box, or my shop. You follow me?
Mm-hmm.
And you can take it still, yes, all, I could cut that box open in a second and get in there in two seconds. I know too much. I wouldn't do it, and I don't want to do it. That's what I'm saying. That's just me personally.
Understand.
But, and I just didn't know how, where you classified a business, and as you go, you know, I work from home.
Would this, this wouldn't force somebody like that to do that?
I don't have an automated system, so.
Who doesn't, who doesn't have an automated system?
If you, if anybody that expands their business, um, they have to do it.
Okay.
I, I would suggest we let Mary write up an ordinance that we can present at the next meeting. And we can hear, we can hear if there's any, any dissension.
And that's exactly what's to get a technical
Is that okay?
Obstruction of what they are.
Can you clarify where this box is? I, at one point, I thought it was on the front door, and then you said, somebody said something that made me think it's in the van, the police van, or something.
The master key, the master key is in the police van, and that master key has a key that, they, they open a box.
And where is that box?
That they open a box in their vehicle, okay?
Okay.
That is bolted down in the vehicle, and inside there is a master key. That master key lets them come to the residence or the business and unlock a box.
Okay, so the box is at the
Yes, bolted
Business.
in or to the wall. Can be built right into a wall.
Okay, I wasn't sure how that worked.
Yeah.
There's a box on the wall, but it doesn't have a key.
Right.
So it's private.
Yeah, right.
I wonder if you walk in and, I mean, quite frankly, the alarm tipped off, I mean, asking for a friend, of course, and the police come in and, you know, if there's some kind of contraband or something like that, I mean, you know, are you giving up?
I don't know.
Have you given your permission for them to come in, or is it a forced access way because it's by law? And, you know, I mean, I would like to came my house. I don't know anything, you know, that we're not able to see, but I'm just wondering, in the event that somebody did have a questionable situation and you've marched into their place of residence or their
If you're growing marijuana in the basement, I wouldn't recommend that you get a Knox box.
No, 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 not in residence.
It's a marijuana farm, no.
No, we, we've already said that it's, it would be, for a residence, it would be voluntary.
Yeah, but I'm talking about a business, even. I mean, you don't know people. I'm just curious. In that part of the law,
Yeah.
you have forced them to give you entry.
Sue, if you read Rod's report, they do three, three, three and four hundred business checks every year, every, every month.
Every month.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just, that's, you know.
I can say this
Checking if the door is locked and walking in are two separate things.
Most municipalities I represent, um, do require new businesses to install Knox boxes, and everybody seems very happy with the arrangement. I've never seen
Well, most people are law-abiding. I mean, you know, I'm just, that was going through my head, is, you know, what kind of entry is that? Is that entry with permission, or is that a forced entry because you made it the law?
I'm, I'm not a criminal lawyer. I'm not even gonna try and pretend to answer that question. I would be nervous about it because they would be there lawfully. You, I, I don't know.
It's police or fire. That's, unlimited number of them that can do it, so it's pretty controlled. And they go there for emergency purposes only.
I understand, but under what circumstances that happens?
Well, certainly, they could not go into your locked box and get the key out and go in because, um,
For no reason.
without, without a warrant for, if it wasn't an emergency situation. So if you have a fire and they go in and there's, you know, evidence of criminal activity, I don't think they would be prevented from using that.
Well, they would knock the door down in that situation anyway.
True. They almost have to, right?
Yes.
It sounds like, I, I don't understand this really well, but it sounds like we're talking about the benefits are for the business owner. Why, so I'm curious about why it would be a requirement. Like, why would, why would be the township's interested in requiring this?
I don't know.
Township doesn't, see the police or fire company?
It's the fire companies. It's not for township.
Township has nothing to do with it.
It's a benefit for the police or the fire company to save, to save, yes, to save damaging the, the business property.
Premises.
Part of the property.
I think a lot of meetings of how do you see it as a benefit to the business owner? It allows the police to get in and, like, if they see a break-in going on, if they see a problem or a fire starts, it's, I think, it's seen as a benefit to the business to allow unfettered access to help the business. I don't think it's seen as a
Yeah, that's, I guess that's, I mean, I'm questioning why it would be a requirement if it was for the business.
Vera, if I may, can I ask, Jerry, would you, would you comment on this? Jerry Gresky's with the Telford Fire Department.
And Jerry, also, I'd like to know, is there, uh, an insurance advantage to people that put it in also?
I don't know if there's an insurance advantage. What you're referring to is every one of our, uh, every piece of apparatus has a little box, and it has a blue light on top of it, and certain officers are coded to get into that. The key for the Knox box, which is located on the business, it's generally for business, located on the business wall, on the outer wall, allows us to go to that Knox box and open it, get the key to go in. When we get there, you gotta realize we're a hundred percent volunteer. When we get called to an alarm, uh, we could stand there for an hour, hour and a half, waiting for somebody to come to let us in. If we, we do, if we get called to an alarm, we do a three-sixty of the building, if we don't have any reason to believe that there's a fire here, we're taking a risk if we break in, and we're taking a risk if we don't. So we're caught between two, two bad places. So the Knox box is, again, primarily business, and it's primarily a time saver for, for the volunteers, and it, for business owners, it saves them the, the time of getting out there. But the security, the code in the trucks and the apparatus, um, there's one key in each box, and that blue light won't go out until the two's put back in and then we're shut. As far as the Knox box, uh, on the wall, I don't know how easy they are to get into. I really don't, uh, but, um, there are, there are big advantages.
Isn't the reason is because they have an automated fire system? That's why you have the ordinance, is because the alarm can go off anytime. It's not the owner calling the fire department.
Right. That, that's what he's referring to as far as saving
That's why you have the ordinance.
A lot of times, the fire companies are standing there for an hour, hour and a half till somebody comes to shut the alarm off, and they're volunteers.
But it's only businesses that have that automated system.
That's not, that's not true.
That's what the ordinance in Sellersville.
Jerry, you have a comment on that?
Again, we get dispatched for somebody, somebody will come by and, um, they'll see smoke coming out uh, from a steam vent or something like that. Uh, it's not necessarily always, uh, a monitoring system.
Okay.
Call it. So if a tester by them called and reported they saw smoke.
And it could have been a dryer vent or something like that when it's cold out.
And it, it's the same thing. So at two o'clock in the morning, you're standing there for an hour, hour and a half, and you can't get in. You know, you know what it is possibly, but you can't let it go until you get, you know, notification.
Okay. Alright.
But the ordinance you read from Sellersville was for only businesses that have automated systems. Is that correct?
That's what Greg said.
No, I said it was one of the four. One of the four.
We gotta get these two looking at the same screen.
I think, um
So we will do the, we'll get something prepared for next month.
You'll propose it.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Greg and I will work it out.
Uh, there's a lot of stuff online about these. If anybody wants to read up on it before our next meeting, you can probably check with Jerry or Greg and get, find out what some information is, if you're, if you're concerned about it or if you want to know more about it.
Yeah, and what will happen is Mary will draft an ordinance, and then once it's ordered, the board will look at it, and then it will go up for advertisement. Then we'll post it up on our website, and then everyone will have a chance to look at it too.
Okay. Is that it? Is that it?
No, there's one more thing. The two thousand eighteen budget.
Oh, right.
Per, per the regulation, you have to advertise it for thirty days before you, uh, adopt it. So alls I'm looking for tonight is authorization to advertise it.
To advertise, okay.
Um, there's, there's a couple of key points. Um, reduction in police costs of approximately eighty-two thousand. Well, we're going to do codification, twenty-one thousand dollars over two, two years, which is a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
And the road repair budget will be two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and we're projecting revenues to be down about two thousand dollars. Um, that's, it's a bare bones, that's all that we have, budget.
Okay.
But once you authorize that, I can post it to the website. You can take public comment at your December meeting.
And right, right now, we have no increase, uh, in taxes because of the budget.
No. Yeah, there's, there's no proposed taxes.
Yeah. Okay. While it's still fresh, Don made a motion.
No, I'll second it.
Motion's been seconded. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, you may advertise.
Advertise.
All right. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. All business, anybody? We covered, we covered a couple of businesses already.
Yeah.
New business?
I have none.
None?
I have none.
All right, public comment. Please state your name and address. Abby?
Abby Shermer, eighteen oh five Ridge Road. Um, I just want to, uh, tell you that I left you a municipal report from the Penridge, from your Penridge Community Center, which is West Rock Hill Senior Center. And also, I have a copy of the budget in there as well. And you will see how much we have to depend on the municipalities to help us pay the utilities and the mortgages against the property. If you have any questions, you can get back to me. If you look at it, just call me. I'll be glad to, uh, answer them or to come up with an answer. But we, as you know, the salaries of both the manager, part-time manager and part-time assistant manager are paid through the county. But we have to, uh, raise all the rest of the money ourselves, which a lot of people think it all comes from the county to pay for the whole thing, and that's just not so.
We will, we will review it, Abby.
Okay.
And we will get back, we'll have, we'll have some kind of discussion next month, okay?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You got it.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead. I'll let you, I'll let you go first, Bob.
Thank you. Robert Linden, Reagan Drive.
Okay.
Tonight, Mr. Miller charged me with sending out links to the YouTube videos which I post on YouTube of all the meetings, specifically insinuating that I'm trying to slur him somehow. And I challenge him to show me all these links I sent out. I think you will find that I didn't send out links. You, you need to review wherever you think you saw them.
On BuzzFeed.
See, I didn't post anything on BuzzFeed.
I thought that was from, I thought that's where you had said yours came from.
No. BuzzFeed, no, my link, my, my videos that I take of this meeting and of the Upper Bucks Tech School are posted on Penridge dot buzz, which is a YouTube channel.
That's what it was.
And, and then you said I sent out links.
I, Bob, I clicked on it, and, and it came up.
But where you, where did you get the link?
Uh, it was right under another version of your entire, and it was your video right from there.
But, but my videos get posted automatically by YouTube.
If, Bob, if I, if I owe you an apology, I'll give you an apology. I want to, I want to work through it with you.
Okay, I want to work through it with you too, because I did not do anything unintentionally to slur you or your wife.
All right.
If somebody copied my links and sent them out, I can't control it.
All right. I will, I'll work with you on that, Bob. I mean, I, right now, I have an apology.
Look it up, yeah, wait. Look it up. Yes, Mr. Razner.
Yeah, Paul Razner, fourteen oh two Long Avenue. Uh, just a comment on your dead agenda. Tonight, there must have been twelve interruptions. I call them interruptions. I mean, you have on here public comments before we start. The gentleman did a nice presentation, and the lady, they were on that topic. We had others that weren't. And it just seems like it's endless. We, we get lost.
You are right.
There's no, there's no rhyme or reason what's happening here.
I left some people speak.
I know emotions are high with these quarry people. But that's no reason not to run a parliamentary meeting, period. And my last statement is, I still reject the purchase of this open space with that body of water. To me, it's a liability, and I've written it down. I've posted it on my own personal notes. When something happens, you three gentlemen are going to be called upon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay.
Frank Schuman, there at ten thirty, Allentown Road. I believe we have an ordinance on the books that there are not to be electronic advertising signs in the township. On township roads. Okay? But that does not stop those signs from going on three oh nine within the township on a Penn Dot Road?
I don't know that.
Yeah, it does.
You can't, you can't put them on a, on a Penn Dot Road. Township ordinance is a township ordinance, am I correct?
Penn Dot doesn't allow signs within its right-of-way, so if anybody wanted to put up a sign that was visible from three oh nine, they'd have to put it on private property, um, and that is subject to the township ordinances. Not saying that the Penn Dot right-of-way isn't subject to township ordinances, it is, but I was just giving you a little bit more of an explanation.
Okay, so Allentown and Ridge Valley Road would not have the possibility of having an electronic billboard sign being put up there?
A new electronic, or is there one now that you're complaining about? Okay. So you're saying we're protected? Oh, you're talking about that monstrosity in Quakerdale.
Yes. Has everybody seen that monster?
It's Quakerdale, Brian.
Or Quakerdale. Yeah, I ride by it every day, and we couldn't figure out what it was when it was going up. But now it's, I guess it's just about finished. And it is one of the worst things that I've ever seen.
It was in full operation this morning at five o'clock.
Yes.
Advertising.
Right.
Dangerous distraction.
And I don't know who the gentleman is or the lady that has already got a petition going with about three thousand or four thousand names to have it taken down. But, uh, it is something, you know, there are some of them that are not bad-looking, but this is the most atrocious sign I've ever seen.
They're not allowed in West Rock Hill.
Okay, I just want to make sure of that.
Thanks, Frank.
Rena Relling, seventeen thousand McAllen. We have three hundred eighteen signatures we've collected opposing the possible zoning change. The other thing, when we're talking about in-kind, uh, contributions by an entity, may, Vera and I were talking that maybe there should be a policy in the, uh, formulated by the township where they are somehow, um, that, that they just don't disappear. That if fifty-two thousand dollars is given, uh, for a parking lot, that the, the giver can be anonymous, but the fifty-two thousand dollars should be acknowledged.
So.
It's on file in Sellersville, where, where the, where our bookkeeping is kept.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. But it's not on file here?
No, that's.
And it was, it was, it's a joint, uh, body, right? Anyway, that was, that's something maybe you could consider. Even that walkway in the park, you know, that wasn't on the books.
I will, I will inform you, though, too, um, that the walkway in the park originally, and the parking lot, was paved by H and K for free to the township, and that wasn't on the books either. The entire walkway around the entire park.
Right.
And the, and the parking lots across the street. And I don't know, I don't recall the exact year that that was done, but it was done quite a long time ago.
Well, maybe there should be something where.
We, we should be documenting. Yeah, that would be, that would be a good idea.
So, and twenty-two years ago.
Twenty-two years.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Oh, Corina, I'm sorry.
Oops.
Corina, it is on file here. As soon as I found out the amount, I, I sent a note to Greg with the fifty-two thousand, so he could report it also.
Oh, yes. But it wasn't?
Not initially, no. We, Sellersville went out to get the, the amount, and it took a while to get that, and it was not on, you're right.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Randy Clemens, Thousand Day Road. I just would like to make a couple of comments and facts for, uh, the toilet aid situation that's been going on here in the township.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not really sure why anyone would be, uh, going to a hearing about a toilet to listen to this Dennis Clement speak when the issue was actually, the citation was my name only. So I don't know why you would even think Megan would be speaking at that citation. It was between the township and actually me only. And also, if you want to go watch Megan talk about politics, the wonderful people up here, they do a bridge out recording all the school board meetings. I'd encourage you to go to a school board meeting if you're interested in that. Or you can go on the YouTube channels and watch all that information. It's all there for you to watch all day, all night if you want. I don't really think that would be the appropriate situation to watch about, a toilet that has nothing to do with Penridge School.
That's not really your choice to make.
That's my opinion, and it's also my public comment. I didn't interrupt you.
Fine.
I'd also like to say that I also filed a right-to-know request to find out about the letters that were sent out on March sixteenth. And if we want to talk about political game plan, my right-to-know request was not fulfilled within the seven days. I don't know if yours, yours was, but mine was delayed until an extension to review. And as soon as the request hearing was over, magically, hey, by the way, all your information is available to township. You can go review it. So I'm not sure, that's a little weird. I don't really know why that happened. I wanted to review the information from my request and my hearing myself. I'm not sure if you experienced that, but, I mean, it's really a shame that we have to be sitting here still talking about this after another week when, I mean, we've done nothing wrong. I have no record. I, I volunteer in the community, and for a toilet being out at the end of our road to have a citizen crying for, you know, some dollars is ridiculous, in my opinion. And it's also wasting taxpayers' money to be having us there looking at, write the citation, go to a hearing, having the attorney review right-to-know requests and other information. I think that we can spend our time and our money here in the township in a lot better ways than trying to do something like that. In addition, the policy should be rewritten if we want to enforce it that way, because it does specifically say twenty-four hours the trash can be not put out. And it also says that within twenty-four hours of your collection time, the, the waste containers must be removed. It says nothing about trash. It says nothing about the toilet or anything like that. So if you would like to enforce it the way that the citation was writ, I think the policy needs some updating.
Thanks for your comment. Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment into executive session.
So move.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.